Thank you. That was very, how did you do that for your voice like that? All right, this is the meeting, the column being to order. This is a meeting of the Hamden Board of Selectmen and Board of Health being held in Townhouse Auditorium, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, six P M. The meeting is being conducted remotely in conjunction with Governor Baker's order of March twenty twenty, along for video teleconferencing. Please stand for the pleasure of leisure. Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? Please signify in some way. Saying that, can everyone hear us okay? Raise your hand, wave. Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
It's working.
You. First of all, I'd like to begin by welcoming Mr. Rivas to the Board of Selectmen, congratulating him on his election.
Okay.
I think you'll find it reward, challenging, sometimes frustrating, but in the end very rewarding. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. Glover for her many years of service to the town, not only as a select person, but also on the Hammond School Committee and on the Regional School Committee, many years and the work she's done. We appreciate that, thank you. First item on the agenda minutes. April fifth, twenty twenty one. Second, all in favor? April twelfth, twenty twenty one.
Motion to approve, April twelfth.
Second, all in favor? And April twentieth, twenty twenty one. Yeah.
So move.
Second, all in favor? Chairman, I looked at the file today. Two thousand twenty is complete for all regular meetings and executive sessions. I looked at the twenty one file and we're missing, I think, three sets and then into May. So we're into May, so. In a week or two, the minutes will be completely up to date.
And Bob, you had said there was unfortunately a recording problem with one of the meetings.
Yes, May thirteenth. I believe it was May third, it was the nights that the system shut down. And when it shut down, I was paying attention to the meeting and I didn't look to see if the recording had been shut off. And it shut, it's shut off. We will have minutes for that, but no video.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, as tradition after an election, is Selectmen's reorganization and liaison assignments.
As the chair, I'd like to, I'd like to kind of go back to the way it's been for decades, if you will, just the member of the board who's up for serving his third year, third year, be service chair. So I'd like to nominate you to be chair, even though you've held the position for the last ten years.
It seems.
Finally, I think you're growing into it. So my nomination would be for you for chair of the board.
A second. All in favor? Two for one abstention.
And then. Board of Health. So I'm the new guy to the board, so I think John Flynn, I'd like to nominate him for Board of Health Chair. He's been here for a while and kind of knows the ropes and feel you do find enough position.
I'll second that. All in favor? Liaison assignments, want to run down those?
There were a couple missing on the email, I think.
They were. I added them to the packet. They have been added to the packet, so if you. Take a look on the, behind the agenda, I think that's all inclusive there.
Okay.
I'd be in favor of you guys retaining your current liaison spots because you're comfortable in them, you know what's going on. And I wouldn't mind taking on what Mary Ellen had.
Yeah, well, the only change we had.
So you have school committee, parks and rec, library, library and cemetery.
Yeah, and you're already, you're already a coach in the system.
And I got stormwater advisory, conservation, zoning board of appeals. I like zoning board of appeals.
Does that mean twice a year?
Maybe. All right, so we all set with that? Yeah, we got those.
Only change was moving Board of Health over.
Board of Health, John, otherwise.
In connection with this, I did also advertise on our website for an M WAC representative, replace the Handen person who is retiring or resigning.
And we're still looking for a, a Scenic Valley Commissioner as well, plus a firefighter.
That's, that's posted.
Down one in Scanting Valley. What's that? We're down one in Scanting Valley.
Well, we've been down one for a while.
Well, George is semi.
He's out.
Yeah, he's out officially?
All right, highway garage expansion, this is just an update type thing.
We did have another meeting with the architect designer. Everyone knows that the town meeting added three hundred thousand to the project. I have the bid documents up to date and they're going to be posted this week on the central register.
So how long does that take? What's the?
We're looking at maybe. Two weeks, between two and three weeks for the walkthrough. And then we should allow another two, maybe three weeks after the walkthrough for the bidders to put together their documents.
If we, what do we, we haven't done anything with the steel, right?
No, no.
What's, what's?
Pretty good, but he said, look, if you want to pull the trigger on the steel, get a price right away and go ahead and do it. The only thing we see trending down is wood is starting to, I want to say flatten, but it isn't as precipitous a rise as it was before. Steel, however, is still just as bad. In my business, I'm seeing it every day.
So he thinks if we buy the steel now, it will save us money in the future, right?
It won't go down. And we certainly have more than enough money to afford that in storage as well. I think that was his recommendation.
That's right, it's not just. The end of the COVID and more demand, it's also the tariffs. And that's another reason why it's probably not going to go down. I read a long article over the weekend in one of the papers about rising price of steel, American made steel.
I would suggest that Bob investigate working with Larry on that, too.
So that puts us out about six weeks now for walk-throughs and bids.
You know, and I think we can shorten that up. Again, we're going to get, I think, some of the same bidders. I don't understand why it can't be two weeks, two weeks.
Two weeks and two weeks, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah. We really.
I don't think we're going to see different.
People.
Yeah. Once things get rolling, it's a good time.
All right, the Amarestco Solar Landfill, they have a planning board, a continuation of planning board hearing.
There was a meeting onsite last week. Representative from the planning board, John Matthews, the highway superintendent, myself, and a representative from Amarestco, take a look at the layout and try and reach some kind of accommodation for both sides. We walked away thinking that that had happened, that the planning board willing to make some concessions on setback and so forth. They also are going to do, I think they're going to do a double row at the, at the end of the property where the shadow won't matter. They'll have a plate and then another one on top of, so. They're going to get most of what they, most of what they want, and I think the impact on the town's revenue there will be very minimal.
And Mark.
Mark is fine.
Mark is. He's, you said, I spoke to him, he's cleaning up his area.
He also agrees to tighten up. Now, is that going to account for both locations that Mark was looking for? Past the recycling and then the composting areas?
We weren't touching really compost any of, because that was, a lot of that was inside the walls of our.
Well, where the wood is also, it can be.
The wood, the wood in the dirt pile is really a big concern. And I think as Don said, tighten that up a bit, I mean, how many flunks do you really need? Plenty out there.
And it's really a planning board issue.
Yeah, it's entirely the planning board, not the selectman or the administrator. And that takes place Wednesday night. It will be the.
Right here on our stage.
Right here on our stage, coast to coast and around the world. Through the internet and it will, it'll be the third extension of the year. And the anticipation is that it's probably going to get finished up Wednesday unless something develops.
I have to say, I have to say that the Amarestco people have been very, very patient in this process. You know, they waited through a couple of iterations of, you know, the solar payment, how they get paid and that kind of stuff. And, you know, they've gone through the planning board process and all this, so they.
The worst problem has been the fact that they're enrolled in the SMART program and the state has been, the legislature has not been quick on this.
Do they have anything outstanding with Comcast stuff? Do they still have anything outstanding with Comcast? As far as.
I think, I think Joanne mentioned something to me today as a matter of fact.
I think they do. Ben, are you on?
Talk to the other.
Yes, I am.
Amarestco have, at the solar, at the transfer station, have anything left with Comcast?
Yes, they still have a total report they have to get to us. We still haven't heard final decision from Springfield D E P, what they're doing. The last thing I knew, they were still working on their final analysis. And there was also, I'm not sure exactly where stormwater sits. We are assuming planning boards handling all that, but we haven't had a report that says that they are doing it all. So there are some questions that are still in the air. We also just received today a report from, I believe it's S W C A, don't quote me on the initials, but the environmental consulting firm, their report just came in today. So we won't even review that until the night, sixteenth of the month of June.
Conservation.
Right. Anything else, regional, anything else on the?
I was going to make, that was also not. Contract that out, whichever, that'd be something the board should consider in this town land. That the option to either have Amarestco do it, or we can contract it out and have the revenue. The partial that's wooded to the east. Ask Bob to get some quotes, or Mark to get some quotes from Northern.
Regional dispatch consolidation.
I know, I know, I know, I know. I just came back on.
Anthony is on?
He is. There he is.
I'm here.
Hey, Anthony, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
How goes the, how goes the transition?
Oh, it's going good. On May eighteenth, we started answering Hamden's nine one one wireline and wireless phone calls. We had a few bumps in the road, less than I actually anticipated, and we've actually gotten through them and we're, we're working really well with our Hamden partners right now.
Can we ask the chief to come up for me?
Come into the witness chair there. There was some issue with communication over the weekend?
Yep, so on Friday, my staff advised me in the morning, about eleven or so, there was a communication issues with Hamden Fire. I notified our radio service, NORCOM, they sent a technician up. They checked our Ridge Road location, went through all the systems, made sure everything was connected properly. Everything was connected on our end, there were no issues discovered on our end, and our technicians were unable to duplicate the error. So they were trying to figure out if it was a Hamden issue or if it was just luck of the draw. Then again, on Saturday, we had communications errors again with Hamden. And this time, more information was received that Hamden firefighters talking to their own apparatus were having issues hearing the communications. So I did notify Hamden Fire that they would need to contact their radio service representatives of Marcus and have them come up and check out their system. Apparently, they did show up and they did rectify the situation. And what exactly was the problem, I'm not sure.
Okay, but it's been rectified.
It has been correct.
Have you heard anything from the state regarding the grant?
I have not. I did. Send in our revised grant with an I M C consolidation. I did ask for that as well, but I haven't heard anything back from them about a timeline. I believe the award letters will hopefully go out the mid-June or late-June with July first being the date that you can start doing the projects that are approved by a state now on one in the development grant.
Mr. Fiver?
So what's the next, what's the next step after this in terms of?
As far as the development grant or?
So you're doing, you're doing the wireless calls and the hard line calls?
Yep.
What's the next?
Phase two of our consolidation will be on or around June second. We have set June second at ten A M, a tentative date to start receiving the non-emergency calls for the town of Hamden in Wilbraham. And then from there, on June second at ten A M on, we will take all calls and dispatch all first responders right from, from Wilbraham.
All right, thanks. Chief?
Sir.
How goes it?
It's going.
And any issues?
I can add to what Tony said today, Marcus was out today, they're working on the fire end, because we house it in the police department. He had, I talked to the gentleman who was out there and he said there was an issue on the top of the roof, he thought maybe with the antenna. He checked that, he went up to Walt's Mountain, checked that, fine. He said all the equipment seems to be working fine. And so he's not really sure exactly what the issue was for the problem that the fire department had. But he says it appears the equipment seems to be working fine right now.
All right, we've got to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, I agree.
So let's talk about the station. Coverage.
So as Tony did mention, the eighth, the June, around June second, we're going to try to do all calls over to Wilbraham. We'll still at that time maintain dispatchers throughout the, each shift. And their primary role at that point in time is going to be assisting us with filling of the shifts and the details, as they've been doing already. Any type of records request that comes in. If a phone call gets sent over from Wilbraham to our dispatch area, need to speak with someone, someone will be there. A backup for Wilbraham and a backup for officers that are on the street at that point in time. And so, June thirtieth rolls along, we will have an empty station at that point in time. And we'll discuss, hopefully, maybe having somebody there Monday through Friday before or whatever we want to talk about this evening on suggestions. But I'm planning on keeping them on at least until the thirtieth when.
Well, when you say an empty station, I mean, obviously you'll be there, your secretary will be there. And I thought we had a records clerk that was going to be repositioned to be pretty much the window at that point.
So our records clerk no longer is with us, she had resigned a while back. So as we were going, moving along, I was thinking that the best way to be is having that greeter there during the day, which is going to combine her position for say they can do the records, she was in charge of the license to carries. And she handled the stuff. She also was a backup dispatcher, but at this point in time, we don't need a backup dispatcher anymore in that, in that area. So that can be a combined position at that day, Monday through Friday, eight to four per se. She was a nine to two and seemed to get things, seems to done, but yes, you're right. My secretary is there, does most of the operational end of it. She's been helping out a great deal right now.
Right, I know, I was aware that the records clerk had left, but I thought going forward, you were going to have a records clerk that would handle the application things, also being at the window at the same time. And that was the sensitive board, what we were going to investigate to, at least for one shift, not have a dark station per se, but have somebody at the window for people to walk up.
So that's where that records clerk would be set, the Monday through Friday position per se.
Exactly, you know, L T C things, et cetera.
Right, right, that's where that, Michelle's position per se would be combined in, in front there where the dispatchers sit currently right now would be there. Kathy sits off in her office, in my office. So she would be that greeter, license to carry or he, purpose, all, all purpose person.
Will this person have to be on the union, police union?
No, so I did get some question, some questions asked of me, obviously. So this isn't, this is not a union position, it's a town employee who's non-union. And the salary and the benefit structure was based on what the Collins study was, I would believe, he's a town employee. Cost effectiveness to the full-time position versus a part-time position, sure. We could do one full-time, Monday through Friday, eight to four, forty hour position. We could split into two twenty-hour positions. Just wanted some input from the board on the thought.
My thought, we talked about it a little, my thought was the, the part-time position, because if the full-time person is sick or on vacation, then what do you bring in? If at least you have two part-time people, you call the other part-time person and say, can you come in and cover? Because, you know, Harry is sick, I'm sick today, or vacation or whatever.
We'll be able to work that with those vacations and time off.
Yeah.
Is there anybody from the dispatch crew that didn't get, go to a different place that would be willing to take that role because they're already familiar with the operation?
So that's, that's a point that I did want to make also, yeah. I believe that between the four dispatches we have there, there's at least three of them that don't have a job at this point in time. So we could select from one of those, obviously.
Be a huge advantage that somebody already familiar with the operation.
Right, right, and that's definitely a point that I wanted to mention, too. Again, is, I'd like familiarization within what we do already, less training for us and easier transition smoothly. I mean, they can just stay right on after the June, June thirtieth and however we got to do it, really. Because they're coming from within, I don't think there's anything to do with advertisement or anything. It's going to be a town employee, they drop from the union, from the dispatchers, they're no longer there to, and now a town employee.
Do you think you'd be able to build two part-time positions?
I think, well.
Pay some hours and somebody step up for that?
Obviously with, you know, the dispatch being disbanded, the full-time positions, I think they want both of them, it's not time positions, the ones I would think to offer to, by all means. Part-time, I'm thinking I'd be able to, depending on the pay grade and where we sit in the pay. If it's an insurance benefit position, I know that'd be a concern of a couple of dispatchers that sit there. Whether or not they're going to get health insurance or anything through the town.
Twenty, they would qualify.
Is it, is it twenty or twenty-four?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay, okay.
So if you did, if you did eight, eight hours a day and you wanted to do a Saturday thing for the convenience of town residents, you could do, that'd be forty-four hours, and you could do two twenty-two hour shifts, you know, two twenty-two hour people. Then give them the opportunity to get the benefits and plus we have a Saturday person to sure.
And then same thing, first year, let's track, like.
And we'll just track and see what happens.
So you would, you would like to see two twenty-two hour?
Yeah, to start.
Because we have the overlap.
Are they going to four hour on Saturday or?
Four hours on Saturday.
And maybe they could switch it between the two of them. Rather coming in for two hours on Saturday, you know, like big time.
Like for me, this is my forty-eight hour. All right, so let's, but then I think I also had on your emergency communications, too. We just talked about that, so.
We kind of talked about, I do know that Marcus was supposed to reach out to you Friday, and I think they were going to come on these, they wanted to kind of.
Later.
They, yes, I invited them.
I got one more question on the station. So since we're going to have a dark station at night now, there'll be nobody stationed there, what happens in the event of a lockup? Or a detainee in the third shift hours, where before you've got a dispatcher there, now you don't?
Right, so what has happened even with the dispatcher there? You know, this dispatcher can't leave the nine one one area and everything, go back and check on our person that's in the cell. It's a fifteen-minute check that we have to do on each person that's in that cell. Usually it's a call-in for, first of all, it'd be a full-time officer, depending upon our hours that are available, that full-time officer. If their hours are capped out to where they are for their overtime, then we go to a part-time officer. And they would come in and be there until that person was bailed or transferred, transferred over to one of the sheriffs.
So that protocol will be followed, just like it's always.
It's going to be followed, just like it, like it's always been. That dispatcher was a second set of eyes for us that was there, an officer safety thing, but yeah, so that second and third shift, there'll be the two officers that are on patrol and mutual aid from our surrounding towns to be available, as it always has been. And there'll be, and when those officers are out on patrol, the department will be closed up, not locked up, as we had mentioned. The front door will be open availability, there's going to be a camera shining down on whoever comes into the lobby. There's going to be eventually after June thirtieth, the phone to call in, and Wilbraham will be able to pick up that phone. And that's something that's working through Tony right now. And for the purpose of a emergency situation, that person could go into that area there, secure themselves within the means of that area and be able to reach to Wilbraham, who will communicate to our officers to come in and assist in any way they can. So even though it's, it's, it's dark inside the station, there'll be.
The door open and then they can lock themselves in and get on the phone or?
There'll, there'll be.
And they'll see on a camera, too.
Soon as they come in, that camera's going to be set in there, and Wilbraham's going to have a way into that to see that.
So who's going to lock the door, Wilbraham or can the individual?
There should be a, through Wilbraham's going to have the opportunity to lock it for us.
Okay. So it's not individual, the person goes in there, they can't, they're the button?
I don't believe that was the agreement that we had.
Matron, you're obviously your matron left, is that something you're looking to fill? Do you have to fill?
You don't necessarily have to fill a matron. It's, it's always been a plus for us to have another body there to assist us, especially if you had a female prisoner or something. Area departments, it's the way we do business, if you don't have a female or a matron, so we're not necessarily out there. We don't actually have any matrons at this point in time, other than our current two female dispatchers are there. But once they fall off of, we, we're not.
I know with Tracy before, Tracy was there, Michelle was, I think at one point in time Kathy was too. But a male can also do what they have to do.
And we can also contact another agency that they have a female or if we had a female rescue or something.
Emergency Communications. Yeah?
I don't know if it's gonna be Andrew.
Might not be Andrew at times.
Trying to think, Chris Happ was on the email today. Andrew, Andrew was Gaines, who I communicated earlier.
A G, is that Andrew Gaines?
Yes, I would.
Unmute A G, not the bottom.
It's easier to go to gallery.
Bruce Marcus?
Yes, yes.
Bruce Marcus?
Well, I sent him the agenda, so maybe he's interested.
Right there, yeah.
All right, all right. I'm asking him on mute. Bruce, unmute.
I did, you hear me?
Okay, very good. How are we doing with our, our commu, our setup?
We're doing very well. The police have been cut over, and they've been on it for four days. And we programmed up the fireside today, I think we finished it up around five. We have to build a control station tomorrow so they can get into it. Because normally the console talks to the voter on the old system. And there was a hiccup on the old system on the weekend, and we cut them over to the backup that they had there. But they're on their original system as of, as of today, this afternoon, the guys went up and checked everything. But there's a question of whether or not the equipment at Wilbraham is reaching the system correctly. So we're gonna have to check that tomorrow to make sure that those control stations over there are getting enough signal out to get into Hamden, because there was a report on Saturday that there was a noise reported by the Wilbraham people, and I think it's because of the way they have their antenna placed over there. So we're gonna have to look, look into that and find out if that's the, that was caused the issue for Saturday's hiccup on the old system.
I have all the confidence in the world that you'll fix that over the day.
Yeah, we, we should, you know, we're pretty good at it. And then the chief is gonna give us new programming, and we're gonna program the public safety radios over again. And we've tested the digital side of the PD, and it sounds really good, but we have to program their whole fleet over, but he wanted to make changes before we did that. So Andrew and the chief are working that out.
Now, there was some talk that there was a, a radio, a town in Connecticut that has a very strong signal that's been interfering with us periodically.
I haven't looked at that, I didn't look at the co-channels, but the new system is more in the bowl of the town instead of being up on the hill. So there'll be less chances of that happening, but there is atmospheric conditions that happen. These times of year, it's called atmospheric ducting. I'll send the selectmen the a little dissertation about it, but what happens is the layers of air from very cold nights to very warm days take signals that normally would not reach the town, and they would reach other towns due to the destructing principles going on that goes on. Happens at VHF and UHF predominantly, and the town is a VHF system, so it's possible. Probably be less apparent on digital because unless that town is digital and has the same parameters as Hamden, they're less likely to interfere.
Chief, do you have any comments, questions?
No, they've been, they've been great. We have had some concerns, we've reached out to them, and again, between a small software issue or this, and they're just trying to bring it all together. So I think that's where we're, I'm hoping that's where our issues are at this point in time, in our portables. We are gonna be changing over some of those, we're different frequencies that are in there right now. That was one of my big concerns, the portables. We had Friday, I think it was, along with that noise situation, was one of our officers on the motor vehicle stop. And it was, it was a tough, tough location. They jumped right on it and corrected the problem at that time. So yeah, just hoping we move forward, everything will, a thumbs up.
When's the, the digital online?
That's a good question. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. We can ask Bruce if he's still on.
Bruce? He's still there?
Well, the digital's ready to rock and roll, it's a matter of getting all the radios programmed over there, they're ready to run right now. It's operating dual mode, so as soon as we have all the radios, you know, programmed so they have that channel in it over the, you know, be able to talk on it. The system operates dual mode. If somebody comes up on analog, it'll go analog. If somebody comes up on digital, it goes digital. But the, the portables don't have that channel programmed as digital in the portables yet. So as soon as we, portables or the mobiles. So our team is ready to do it as soon as we get the channel lineup. Well, I got a couple of technicians up there, and we'll make it in a couple hours so that they can use it.
You can shoot for the end of the week, then. I do know that stuff just came to me, I was aware of it Friday, just came to me today. And Friday, you wanna shoot for Friday, we can, I have an option that can be available if you wanna do something.
Yeah, well, the, we don't like to cut over on Fridays, but the system's running, it doesn't make a difference, they can always go back to analog. But we'll, we'll do it, we'll, we'll get it done by Friday.
Tell me if you want Thursday, we can try Thursday for, for, Greg, and see if that option's available.
Thursday, we like to have a day of, a catch-up in case this needs catch-up to be cleaned up from the floor, when we spill the ketchup, so.
When we go, when you go digital, is there the option to go back to analog if something go wrong?
The, the, both, both channels can be in the radio, and they can switch back to analog with this, the same radio system. And the, the quality I tested last Thursday, and the quality is excellent all over town. I had a scanner buff that's in my radio club tell me that he heard me all over the place, and he lives up somewhere, you know, Feeding Hills, he's living in Feeding Hills, listening on the scanner. So he gave us very good, excellent reports, so. I don't think he'll be going back.
Just wanna go back to, you said there was another frequency out of Connecticut that was possibly coming through on some weather conditions. Do you have something to program it? If they're transmitting locally, that there's a tone that they can only receive and not hear from Connecticut to interrupt?
Well, the, first of all, there is a different tone on the system. And if they're coming in, you might hear them underneath as a warble. If it's the same tone, you would hear their actual transmissions that happens in certain, in certain systems. But I'll look at the co-channels, I don't know if they're talking police or they're talking fire where this occurred. But we can look at what the co-channels are. But the original system was up by the Blacks family up on the hill, and that, of course, sees further out over the horizon than the current two sites, cell sites and the one that's out on Route eighty-three. So there's less likely to be interference from the lower sites. But, and on digital, there's much more resilience to interference unless the co-channel happens to be the same digital, but it's very unlikely, because the frequency coordinators keep a very good tab on that, on the digital stuff.
We just lost everybody? Oh, the system is still running there, somehow TV shut down.
Uh-oh.
There you go.
I have a quick question. Bruce, can you send me the information for the new NAC for the Hamden PD, and I'm assuming Hamden Fire is staying analog, correct?
That's correct, although that's dual mode too, that they can go digital.
Okay, could you send me that NAC as well, so I can program them into my control stations? Also, I know you wanna do the cut-over, we were just talking about the cut-over on Friday, is there any way we could wait until Tuesday? I know Monday, the thirty-first is a holiday. Tuesday, I'll be back in, in the area, and I can program the control stations to take the new, the new NAC code.
Yeah, Anthony, just, we can talk offline, but is the, is the control station using an antenna that's on the ice bridge, somebody told me?
It is, yep.
How, how good a signal, have, have you tried listening to, oh, the police analog, how strong is it?
It's one hundred percent strong.
Oh, then there's no issue, then.
Yeah, we're right on the, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure if you're familiar with our Ridge Road location, right off of Ridge Road. But that's where our antennas are.
Oh, okay, no, no, should, if you're hearing it good on analog, you'll hear it ten times better on digital.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping for, and I, and I know the digital signal will be a hundred times better than the, the analog signal.
Yeah, um, yeah, I can get to the NAC code. Just like, one, my phone wasn't tied up, but I could get to that pretty fast, but.
Okay.
This, this, this. Our project manager have your email?
Uh, yeah, I believe so, yep.
Okay, so we'll email it to you quickly, might even get it tonight.
Perfect.
So are we looking for still Thursday, Friday, or Tuesday?
Well, let's get the programming done as soon as possible. When you're, when you're ready, we'll get you programmed. And then Anthony'd like to cut it over on Tuesdays, because he, he, he has the same thought as any one of us. We don't cut over before a holiday, and we like to have our ducks in line in case there's something we need to go back over. You wanna have the troops ready in case something. I don't think anything's gonna be a problem, but we'll, we'll run analog for the weekend. We'll get the fire ready to go over, and we'll reprogram everybody, so it lines up correctly.
So I'll wait to hear from Andrew?
Yeah, Andrew is, will be in touch with you and line it up for getting our techs up there to get the programming done. And look, in any case of an emergency, you can switch over, I mean, you're using analog now, you shouldn't have to change it. The analog system is the same as the digital system, so it's just gonna be a different format on Tuesday once Anthony gets his control station reprogrammed. He's got all the programming software, so he's, he's ready to rock. And Anthony, once you do it, you can even test it. As soon as Andrew gives you the NAC code, you can key it up and see it come back, so.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
All right, we're good to go. All right, thank you, gentlemen. We're gonna switch us, we'll switch down to municipal vulnerability program, because the two consultants are online here. I see Mary Monahan. Hey Tyler is also on. Or did get copies of that were made, one having to do with flooding and the other more general overview of the issues. Go ahead. Where do we stand? Are you talking, Mary, or?
Oh, okay, I didn't know. Okay, so you flipped it to me. Okay, sorry about that. Hi. Thank you for letting Stephen and I give you an update on where you are with your MVP planning and what's happening next. So yes, you would have received two final reports. One is on the MVP planning exercise, which identified the priorities that the town of Hamden has with respect to building local resiliency. And these priorities were determined by the, by, by the official staff and residents that participated in the MVP planning process. Received a second report, which was the Main Street Flooding Project, and I'll defer to Steve on that one. But most recent activity was, as a result of the MVP planning prioritization, the town partnered with the town of East Long Meadow and submitted an application to EEA for additional funding in order to execute some of the projects that ended up being prioritized. And those projects include, first of all, finding out what's going on with the waters in the town of Hamden, as well as the town of East Long Meadow. That was a, a marriage arranged by EEA when they saw that the town of East Long Meadow and the town of Hamden both had indicated an interest in doing similar projects. And they thought there'd be value in the two towns joining together in order to do that. And I will say, it does give you additional points in the process. So the grant that was just submitted about two weeks ago is looking for funding to, to work with the towns to, to identify and prioritize where that flooding is occurring, where's it coming from, what, 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 what's leading to that existing flooding, and what we learned in the workshop was new flooding that keeps popping up. And what are the solutions in order to reduce or eliminate that flooding moving forward? There's also an aggressive public and an outreach component to it, which needs to occur in order to meet the grant eligibility criteria. So that for the town of Hamden and the town of East Long Meadow include one in each community, a workshop that's going to invite your residents and others in the community to, to, to look at the types of green infrastructure, low-impact development, best management practices, native plantings that they could do on their own properties in order to mitigate some of the flooding issues that are occurring. That'd be a Saturday all-day workshop. And then there's another public and an outreach component that has the Commonwealth of Mass, the Bay State Roads Program. That's a transportation program that provides education to your public works and beyond. And they're going to do a training session for your staff that, and any slung meadows, that, that helps educate opportunities to employ best management practices and low-impact development as part of your public works operations. Again, all of these factors are intended to reduce flooding and, and prevent road washouts, damage to property, and even protect the environment. And the last big component of the application was to take the students from the town of Hamden, the town of East Long Meadow, and a students from Girls Inc., which is Chickaby, Hooyoke, and Springfield, together for a one-day workshop to talk about. And we're talking junior high students, from their perspective, what do they see with respect to climate change and them? And then how does climate change in rural communities like East Long Meadow and Hamden compare to climate change threats, which we're reading more and more about that now in a more developed community like Hooyoke, Springfield, or Chickaby? So it's, it's a really cool opportunity to get junior high students together to start talking about their future in light of climate change. So that was the, the highlights of the application, there's a whole lot of moving parts in it. And Steve, did you have anything you wanted to add to the MVP planning process conclusion in the app?
That was a very good summary, Mary. I'm going to say, I don't have anything to add about the MVP process in the app. A couple of things that, that we spoke about before that you might want me to tell you a little bit about, and, and I, and I will. And it comes from the work. One is, if you want, you know, just a little summary of the, of the status of the Main Street Bridge there in the vicinity of the Laffey Brook. And immediately following this process, we helped the town submit an application for a grant for Department of Ecological Restoration to hopefully help with some of the design of it. It's a tough grant to get, so I, I don't know where to put your chances, maybe a coin flip. And then the other thing that we looked into, what is eligibility is for the Small Grant Bridge Program and/or next steps. And so we plan to, you know, work with your town administrator and your, and your DPW, Bob and Mark respectively, and, you know, up them, update them on all those things. And with that type of information, that's what we try, try to gain from this next grant application that Mary's talked about. Covered assessment like that, you know, will go a long way for your capital planning. You know, just even the small things like your training, your day-to-day operations that work towards that. So any of those things that you might have questions on, further information on, and want me to take a few minutes for, I'm happy to. But those are the type of things that are in the reports. They were actually, the hard copies were mailed to, to administrator Bob and to, and one to DPW. One of each, and two of each respectively were mailed out today, so they should receive the hard copies this week. If you want additional hard copies, you can let us know that as well. They're pretty voluminous because of all the information included in the, not only the assessments, but also the appendices. But if you feel like you want some additional copies, some, we can provide those. Thank you. Thank you.
I saw in one reference, looking through a report, they pulled out the dam here in one of the pictures. Does that have anything to do with grants available for that? Because they're calling it out in this.
Let's give out the, uh, the dam.
So, um, so we did spend some time looking at and talking about the dam. Um, and you're talking about the one across from the, the townhouse, the one that's used for fire suppression. Um, so, so one of the challenges with the dam is, is the fact that there are so many needy dams that, and that dam is not highly rated when it comes to risk to, to the population. Um, it, it's a low-risk, low-threat dam situation. And, um, so it's out there, it's noted. One of the things that might be, you know, that we're hopeful on is moving forward with the infrastructure bill that's coming from the federal government. These are the kinds of projects that have now been prioritized by your community that hopefully when funding becomes available to go beyond the available monies that the Commonwealth has supplemented by existing federal programs, that's something that can move forward. But briefly to answer your question, the current grant programs out there don't provide a whole lot of promise for that dam due to the low-risk dam, um, classification that it has.
So what are we doing now? We're waiting for what?
You're, 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 you're waiting for two grants to be reviewed by the Commonwealth and a response back. I don't know when the DER, um, announcement would be made. Steve worked with the town on that one. The MVP grant announcement is scheduled to be made sometime at the end of August and, or early September. Um, and then the project would kick off, and for the amount of work that's in this, um, it's gonna be about, um, it's gonna cover two fiscal years. We applied for two fiscal years of funding in order to, um, do the assessment and then, um, began identifying some conceptual designs in order to aggressively move the town forward to correct some of the issues. And then, um, Steve, I don't know, when, when, when do you see the Commonwealth coming out with the next municipal small bridge grant program? Because that would be the next application that the town would be applying for.
Well, I'll, first I'll answer the question on the grant that they have applied for, the DER COVID grant. Those are all on the same timelines. We should find out that in, in the August timeframe approximately. Um, with regard to the small bridge program, I expect something on that really to be released soon. It's not the, it's not something that gets talked about directly. Um, but I can say that, you know, through channels, we've been asked on pretty high levels about things like what grants are going, with the funding that's expected to come on a federal and state level. We've been asked on pretty high levels what grants are well-suited to get the Commonwealth a good bang for their buck. And with regard to infrastructure and projects that are waiting to go. And, um, there's a lot of people that feel like the small bridge program and the bridge and infrastructure program is pretty high on that list. Uh, certainly was high on my list, and when I spoke about it with regard to recommending it in those discussions. So the short answer is soon. Um, have only heard it being spoke about on very high levels. Not aware of anything like brought to the legislature as of yet, but all of those things are kind of moving pieces. Um, just, I guessing, just gonna say waiting for the chips to fall. So I, I think no matter what, we're gonna hear information over the next two and three months. So as we're, you know, getting ready for the information back for these two, no matter what, there's steps that need to be taken with regard to the Main Street Bridge. And we'll just keep, you know, our, our foot on the communications and the foot on the gas with those to try to, um, make people know that Hamden is there and has some needs that can be addressed under those programs.
Right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for the work you've done, and it's very important for us, and I, I think it'll bear fruit in the, in the, not too foreseeable future. Is that right? Soon. Cancel after soon. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You, you're, you're welcome. Um, and if I, if I can just add one more thing, I do think we'll pay off. And one thing that I think it's important to, to hear, I don't know if I told you before in previous meetings, but I was the DPW director here in the town of Spencer for seven years, and I just did that from 2011 to 2019. And I also just went back last, ye, last, in the last year, in the beginning of this year, because our superintendent left. And so they retained Howard Stein Hudson, and I did the job, so. And I did our annual budget, and I had to go through the committee and all that process that you all just went through in January and February. I had to do my capital planning for the town highway and infrastructure. The, the point I'm getting to, when it comes to these state grants, and Spencer did really well, we've gotten a few bridges. We've got one on the tip still to be built. It took like twenty years to get that thing onto the tip of asking on different levels. I'm serious, from two thousand and three, and it's gonna get built in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. You can get all of those projects, you just have to line it up the way that you're lining. You have to show that you've done the work, you've done the studies. It's what the public wants, it's what the process shows is needed, and that it's a, a, a plan, and it makes you just in better position to get all of these grants and these things that you want. Nothing is a door that's just gonna immediately open. You just line all of these things up, and then they just start falling. They, you just set the path up, and then they fall into place, and they do. And, um, you're in a good place for that with these, and hopefully you get this next grant to do those culverts and get some of these needs fixed. So it, it is a positive message, and I think you will get some things done. And you just keep going on this path of good planning and making good decisions and involving the public.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So first opening of Town Hall in the Senior Center.
I have asked, uh, town employees on two separate occasions, um, if they see any issues or problems, or if anyone would feel uncomfortable, and, uh, that's not the case. Everyone has been vaccinated. And, uh, we're going to open with some fanfare, I guess, on, on the first of June. Uh, the Senior Center Executive Director also sent a message, which I distributed to you about their planning for reopening the Senior Center. It's going to be a soft, so-called soft reopening on the fifteenth of June. In other words, the doors are going to be open, but there won't be any program. They will continue to go forward with the lunch program that they do, and, um, they don't intend really to have group events until much later in this year. And so I think the town will, by, by mid-June, the town will be fully open to the public. Now, until this point, if you wanted the service from the town in person, you would come to this auditorium in the morning or in the afternoon. Uh, we would have a receptionist there, and that receptionist would connect you with a department head, uh, for the kind of service that you needed. Uh, starting June first, the public will be able to come in both doors again and go into the offices themselves. Go see the clerk or go see the building inspector, just like we did prior to COVID.
All meetings will be open at that point for people to visit.
Yes, and I, you know, we're looking really to continue to provide, to have public meetings with people attending in person, but also, uh, run the Zoom program for those who would like to, uh, observe in their home. So it'll be a hybrid-type situation going forward. Uh, the boards and committees that I've been talking with are happy with that. Um, and, uh, it'll be something, it won't be new, but it will be certainly during normal times, something different than we've done in the past. Uh, the visitors, those who are watching at home will see that we do have a couple of issues to deal with here, including better curtains on the windows so that those on that side of the room, like the police chief, aren't washed out in the video. Uh, but as soon as we can fine-tune the lighting system here, I think we can have, we can have a good quality, uh, meeting uh, with good audio and good video for those who want to watch at home.
Who first it is? Uh, Memorial Day, VFW Keith, he's on right there.
How are we doing tonight?
Sir, how are you?
Oh, I'm great. So, um, Memorial Day, we are, area, um, we're doing the service, just waiting for, basically, uh, whether I'm doing it at the monument or we're doing it at the VFW.
And, uh, I guess our concern at the monument had been the crowd control, but if the governor opens everything on the twenty-ninth, then I think we're good to go at the memorial. And I would expect that everyone would be respectful enough to socially distance and wear masks if they feel they need to. What time are you planning to do it?
Uh, we're gonna start our service at noon. Um, Wilberham's is starting theirs earlier. And we're basically, we're sharing the high school band. So, um, the band is gonna travel from the Wilberham service to us at noon.
And the service at the monument would be kind of the traditional thing you do.
Yep. Same thing we normally do after the parade. Uh, the only thing different is we are, we're not doing the parade. Um, I'd love to do the parade. I can't, uh, I can't physically do it a week's planning to get a parade going and have it, um, suitable for the holiday.
I think, I think this is a, I think this is a good way to get back into the pain that, you know, we started this year with the service at the monument, and, uh, I'm sure it'll be good attendance. And, uh, it's certainly a thing that we're, we're all very proud of here at him.
So, yeah, we're gonna do that, and then, uh, hopefully next year we get back to the way it was prior to COVID with, you know, plant sales, hot dog socials, and parades, and the good old days.
All right, so we'll plan on, uh, the thirty-first at noon at the monument.
Absolutely.
See you then. If you have any questions or need any help organizing it, please let us know.
Will do, and, uh, thank you again very much, and we'll see you on, uh, the thirty-first.
Thank you.
The plant sale will be going on.
The plant sale will be going.
Yeah.
So I did have a conversation with Linda as well, and she's been talking to PM. Questions, what's gonna be the status of Academy Hall at this point? I don't think the, the building is completely open at this point. They haven't, you know, opened yet, et cetera. So I think the right thing to do is, plant sale happens, the building is not open yet. Let's go from there, and let this storm of society do their normal opening procedures, start scheduling events when they think it's appropriate. And go from there. And obviously, as the board has said before, we have to be cognizant of the fact we're starting the plan this summer, the painting, and that's gonna constrain what they do.
Anything else on that? Uh, police chief contract negotiation. This contract. We're gonna start all. Police, police contract, you heard from them?
Yes, our contract with the police patrolman expires on June thirtieth. Uh, I've been working mostly with the State Department of Labor, uh, for the past month in, uh, trying to provide them with the information that they need, uh, to oversee this process whereby the police patrolmen here are, are changing the certification of their union. Uh, and that process is pretty much complete. We had a preliminary meeting, and then they canceled the main meeting because apparently there's no objection. IVPO didn't, didn't object. The new union obviously doesn't. And, uh, I did, uh, we wrapped it up, uh, last week. I did speak with both the chief of police as well as the head of the union. And I said, as soon as we get the certification, uh, the town is willing to sit at the bargaining table. What, uh, the process that I recommended to them is have the union come in with a list, a written list of items that they want to talk about. I've asked the chief to look over the contract carefully and come up with any list of things that he wants to talk about in terms of the rights of the chief, management rights of the chief. Uh, we'll exchange those lists. I'll bring them to the board of selection. Uh, we'll have an executive session, and you can make the decisions on what you are willing to do. And, uh, then I'll, I don't know if you want to conduct the negotiations yourself, uh, or you want me to do it, either way.
Kind of different for you, Scotty. I mean, it's the first time you've been on the other side of what you know. Like, now you're like, oh, don't give me that. No, they deserve, they, they deserve what they got. Not that. Deserve to be wellness timely.
We have.
Everything that's going on.
We also have, uh, inside the package, the chief outlining about the, the certain needs when the dispatchers leave, which I think we probably should discuss in executive session.
Yes, yes.
All right, uh, employee evaluation. I put this on because of the, the, uh, we had the college study, and part of the college study is, is the employee evaluation, simply employee handbook. They were supposed to do employee evaluations each year. Uh, I don't know if they've ever been conductor of, each board's do it separately. But I think we need to have a formal process to get that done, and so we need an evaluation instrument.
I ha, I have the instrument. I did send you one example of it. Uh, I have a couple more that you can have a look at. The process, uh, will unfold, as I see it, with me meeting with department heads and having department heads meet with staff and lay out a couple of, um, overarching items for each department for the coming year, and write that down. And so here are your objectives, two or three. Um, and then on that basis, uh, conduct the evaluations in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two. You basically sit down and say, here's what we agreed that you would accomplish. Um, the, um, evaluation form would be filled out and signed by the department head as well as the town administrator, given to the board of selection. So I think that's the, the overall process. If you want me to try and come up with evaluations for fiscal, uh, twenty-one, we could do that as well.
Yeah.
Um, even though we don't, we haven't set up objectives that we expect.
I think we, I think we have to have it done the next time, by, by the next, uh, budget round.
Yes.
You know, that's how we're kind of set up with the, with the steps and grades and, and calls.
It's, um, it won't be a welcome success for a lot, but I, I do think it is in the interest of the town and the taxpayers to do this, uh, as well as the employees. I mean, I think we all need to be told from time to time, uh, where you need some improvement. And, uh, I do have an instrument ready, uh, for the board, since I've been here for the whole year that you can fill it out, and I'll, I'll be the example, I'll be the first example.
All right, so you're gonna move forward on that. All right, school litigation issue. So, uh, I also asked to have this put on the agenda. And, uh, the, I used to brief, I think we all know the, the overview of it, but the, the, uh, so the town, uh, by all suit, against the Hammond Regional School District. Uh, the, at one point, there was a settlement, but the town rejected the settlement. Uh, and then there was a reorganization plan that both towns rejected the reorganization plan. And then in And then in May of of 2020, the judge ruled in favor of the Wilberham, of the Hampton, Wilberham School District on two counts. One was breach of contract. And the other one was ultra virus, which is the saying that the Hampton Wilberham Regional School District did not exceed their authority. They had the authority to close Thornton Ridge School. And they judged left resolution of four other counts open. Open, which was that stood up, need to be resolved. And then the pandemic came, the court case has been dragging along. So then we received a letter from one of the school committee members of the Hampton, Wilberham Regional School District suggesting that we enter into settle. Get a counter claim as well. And the issue I have with that is this. That in the letter, they said the first step in any strategic plan is a SWOT, S W O T, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. He said that doing so in a public forum could expose our weaknesses of a public forum could prove to be significant opportunity to the town of Hampton obtain possible points of argument to be used during litigation. So I thought to myself, what does that mean? So you're saying there's some merit to our case, there's merit to our case. You're concerned that if you have a strategic plan, start with our strategic plan, that there might, there might be weaknesses that show that actually there's merit to the Hampton case? Another thing that was disturbing to me as a member, had been 12 years on the school committee, was, you know, you're putting, winning a court case above a winning education for our kids. I mean, so my view is if they want to talk about settlement, I want the strategic plan to start taking place. Is to start planning for the future for our kids. And I don't, I just found it very disconcerting that that was. The other thing I didn't like about it was too, is like you're putting it on him and you can't plan for the future for our kids because of this court case. Well, the fact of the matter is you can't plan for the future of our kids because there may be weaknesses that would prove that Hampton's cases got a little bit of merit to it. Well, that's where we are and I don't know how we go further before, because talking to attorney Pappula the last time, it seemed to me that this court case was gonna be on the road somewhere yet still.
Well, it does seem like you said, the one note you could take out of that is yes, right now this hamstrings both parties' ability to improve education and educational opportunities. And that's one thing that if you're taking one sentence out, it's true. Right now we have been in spring for the past couple of years. Where are we going? What's the end line? And we're both got a bit of a shackle on us because, you know, it's holding both parties back. Is there, as you said, an opportunity to to find some positive ground for both parties that we can go ahead and raise the educational level for our children? What can we do to get the end line, which is a better educational experience?
In my view, if you have a strategic plan and you get into it and let the chips fall where they may.
Based on our, our budgets, I mean, we've only got $21,000 left to spend. And the school department's already spent over 200. So what happens if we go forward with that? Where's that money coming from if we lose, once, if they lose, is it coming out of who budget?
If the case goes for.
Case goes for, we're gonna be needing more money. Yeah.
Which we don't have, we wouldn't have an opportunity except at the fall town meeting.
I just can't get past the fact that they will not do a strategic plan for the education of the Wilberham and Hampton children because they're afraid that there might be something in that plan, something that may come out that is a weakness that is going to jeopardize their case. And I can't, why, why, why would any school committee do that? Isn't the role of the school committee to say, look, we don't, you know, let's have a plan here for the kids?
Well, that was a letter from one member of the cell.
I know.
It may not, that may not be, you know, so I think.
So I sent that, those thoughts, my thoughts to attorney Pappula. He asked if he could share them with their council. I said, I don't give a damn who you share them with. Matter of fact, I wrote a letter to the editor who published the reminder saying that. And I think I would like to see the Hampton Regional, Wilberham, the Wilberham, Hampton Regional School Committee discuss this in an open forum and decide whether they're gonna go forward with the strategic plan or not. That's my, that's my position. I don't think that's too hard for them to do. I mean, it's about winning a court case or winning education for the kids.
What's more important? Is that where we now, we want to enter into some type of talks as opposed to see what type of strategic options there are?
I, I wish they would just start the day up there.
Are they waiting on us?
Yeah, what they won't, they won't do it until we settle the case. According to the letter from the one, from the one. Well, I've asked, I've asked, I've said, I tried, I said my thoughts to attorney Pappula. He said, can I share it with them? I said, yeah, fine, please do. I'd like to know it.
Why don't we get into a little more one-on-one type thing where, you know, we talked to potentially maybe attorneys could talk and maybe one member of our. You know, really, let's, let's establish some ground rules. He made the point like, okay, here's your thing. That's fine. We don't agree with that, but nothing wrong with discussion. And let's not violate anything, but I think the chair, who has some good ideas, why don't the chair go over and have a conversation with their chair, et cetera, let's try and move. Let's figure out where the goalposts are. Let's figure out where the goalposts are, not move them. Right now, we've been treading water for years. The pandemic's not helping, the court case isn't helping, and the only thing that's hurting is the children of the district. And both parties have spent quite a bit of money that could have been used for some educational advantage in the district. Either we're gonna go forward, not gonna go forward, we're gonna have a plan, but right now we go on Hampton and Wilberham, some goal here. Don, if you want to go ahead and, you know, get together with Pappula and start some dialogue, hey, great, let's move.
Yeah, I think as chair, you and Pappula should meet with their heads and see what the common ground is.
What does our liaison think?
Yeah, no, I know.
My hearing aid's not working tonight.
I got one myself. Well, yeah, as I stated the last meeting, which was May 3rd, we shouldn't pass up an opportunity to talk. But we need to talk, I think Ed's recommendation of a greater group of people, I think it was three and three, to put the burden on Don with one opinion, I mean, I believe if I, my notes are correct, the suggestion was the two lawyers and three people from the Wilberham, I'm sorry, the regional school committee and three people from representing.
Six people total, okay.
That would be eight. Two lawyers, three and three. But to Don's point, we have, they did decide against two of the, of the decisions, but there is an appeal and that, we didn't go to court with those. And we can appeal that decision, but it all is in the money. I think it is estimate was $25,000 to, to, to go through the whole appeal. The question is, we gotta get this address. And if address is sitting down and seeing what they say, then we can, you guys can always say no. But, you know, I mean, there has to be some ground, some, some guidelines set. And we had a very active court case until we got slowed down. Our agreement with the regional school says our kids will be educated in Hampton. Well, they found a way around that. The agreement was, well, apparently a preamble doesn't get included into a contract. I mean, we can appeal that, so to Don's point, if one person on the school committee who's, he's been very involved in the court case from the beginning, if he says we can't move forward on our strategic plan, then boy, I'd love to know what the heck he's talking about. Because he said that there's things in the strategic plan that we could use against the lawsuit. But on the other hand, we can't wait three or four years to settle this stuff. And we have a building over there, so first steps are always talking. What's the harm in talking, losing a couple hours?
So if the three of us meet with three of them, does that have to be open session?
That's, that's our problem. So I think we talked before, potentially Bob, Bill and Don would represent the interests of Camden without getting into a form violation.
Right, but then that's where he makes the point of it's unfair to put all that burden on Don's shoulders.
Well, that's why you have Bob and Phil involved.
Would have a little part.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Nancy Zebra. Could you identify the speaker because he's not clear? Phil Schneider. Thank you.
There are yelling, I'm sure you have an opinion.
There were six issues brought before the court. The judge had the opportunity to dismiss all six and say this is a frivolous lawsuit. The judge did not do that. The judge dismissed two and said the four other counts could go to the court to be heard. They were reaching for payment via dealings, promised area of stoppage, injunction to relieve and a perjury. This has been going on a long time. I think that I don't, the mediated settlement that came first time was not acceptable. My concern is I don't see anything that they can give to him. They have a buy here plan in place right now. Yeah, because the question would be on October 17th, like it's but of course COVID hit, so they can't go, they can't do that. I think if it's unless you, I've done contract negotiations and when you go to mediation, you have something that you want to give up. I'll give up coaches salaries so that we can get teacher salaries. I will give up sick days so we can get personal days, whatever. I have to have something to give up. I don't think that we have anything to give up. And I think that we are losing control of the education of our kids. People don't know what's going on in the schools. The quality of education is a concern everywhere in the country, but certainly at Hampton and Wilberham. And I just think it's, it's, and I think having a team that, that was suggested that goes in for the mediation has, is a stacked death. I mean, before you even go in, I don't know what the outcome is gonna be. So is it really a mediation? Or is it just signing off on the, on the, you know, settlement?
Well, why do you think it's a stacked death?
Because I think that when, when the positions have been expressed, I am really the only strong, strong voice that says we have to have our kids back in Hampton. And so if we're not gonna get our kids back in Hampton, okay, then if people are entering the room thinking that that's okay, then that to me, it has a bit of a stacking to it. Because that's how you're going into the room. You're saying, okay, well, we, it's always good to talk. Well, it is always good to talk and people are really willing to talk. But I don't see them as being really willing to talk. I have been in in discussions about this for six years. And I see no movement from six years ago to today at all. In fact, I see movement the other way. We used to have few kids go over. Now we have more every year. We get more kids, we get more kids, we get more kids. The idea that they, they went to the MSBA to have a, to, to get a grant through a new middle school over there on Wilberham property, it didn't get approved because they said your, your two middle schools are just fine. But that was rejected. I'll give you the date of it if you want, because John doesn't see it, he remembers that. The middle school was on June 10th of 16, the middle, the MSBA rejected the SOI submitted by the regional district. And that SOI was to build a middle school on Wilberham's property. Okay, because they wanted both the middle schools to go together. They did a site visit to Wilberham Middle School, they did a site visit to Hampton Middle School. You may remember this, I assume. And they said, we didn't need a new middle school. We had to use the two middle schools we had. I mean, it just, I don't see progress they made. But that's, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. So that's what I think.
So what concerns me here in the summary judgment from Goodwin is I'm gonna quote it here. The court also notes that when voters approved the 1993 agreement, they eliminated their power to initiate an amendment process through petition. Thus Hampton voters not only lack referendum right, they also cannot functionally rescind the closure of TWV by initiating and passing an amendment that requires separate elementary and middle school in each town. We're granted equal education, which we have, they've given us. So this line here concerns me that is the winning and losing of that case. Because we are having school weekend. I understand the concept of pulling over school choice in between towns. And that could be a concern that we can work through. But I worry that this statement right here is where the whole lawsuit lies.
And where are you reading from, please?
The summary judgment.
Yeah.
From Judge Goodwin on May 11th, 2020. Page six.
It's hard to understand.
I mumble with the mask. That's the last paragraph.
When voters, I see it, I see it, thank you.
Yeah, so what she's saying, what she's saying is that if a town meeting says, no, we don't want to do this, it doesn't matter because it's not the contract.
Exactly, that's what she's saying. That has nothing to do with the, with the settlement.
Well, it also says a separate elementary and middle schools in each town where the regional agreement doesn't state that, just says equal education in each town.
No, no, it says separate schools. They will be educated at these schools. It names the schools. It says Thornton, Burgess and Fremont in the agreement, in the original contract. That's what they're in violation. And, and this wasn't, thus Hampton voters not only took lack of referendum right, they also cannot functionally rescind the closure by initiating and passing an amendment to require separate schools, but we didn't do that. That was the original contract. It was formed, that was signed in 1993.
I have to go back and read the whole contract, I remember seeing.
Right? I mean, I know that that's right.
The schools are listed at the end of where they'll be educated.
But this raises, this brings into question the whole, the whole, her whole interpretation of what has happened, really, doesn't it? Am I missing? Because there was no, there was no petition.
There was no attempt to.
And there was no, there was no attempt to amend the contract. No, it was never.
Alright, so the issue is, do we, do we do we I guess the first thing to find out is if, if, I, I guess, let me, let me just get permission to do this. To talk to attorney Pappula and ask him, does the entire Hampton, Wilberham Regional School District Committee agree with the letter that found 10%? Right? Same thing, because he says in his letter, now all the members agree to it.
Well, could I, could I also just point out, excuse me for interrupting, but can I also just point out that the vote to go to, to, to do this was a four to three vote on the school committee? It was not even unanimous to, that we should be sending the kids over there. So they don't even have the original vote. That's the only vote they've taken on it was four to three. Okay. They, they established a middle school task force. Okay. The middle school task force was more united in their position. I don't know, I don't recall them taking votes, but they may have taken a vote. So they were, John was on it, weren't you, John?
Yes, I was. I'm not quite sure what we had to do with transfer.
You had nothing. You, I mean, you just were, you were just in favor of, um, addressing the issue, I guess is how I would put it. But the vote, the original school committee vote was four to three.
When you say original, I mean nineteen, nineteen ninety-three?
No, 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 no. I mean, when this was happening. I can give you the date when the vote was.
My own problem with votes that happened in the past is they're not indicative of the present and the future of where we're going. So things may change. Keep all the new information. The votes that they took and voted on back then are probably not the same as they are now.
Twenty-seven years ago, we had classes, grade sizes of over a hundred in the town of Hammond. And the, five years ago, we had grade sizes of forty in the town of Hammond. Not because kids were Wilberham, it's because those were all the kids available to go in that grade. Anyhow, I thought our option here downwards, not so much back upon Tempe's letter, but more like after conversation with our attorney, well, is there an opportunity for a, I won't say high level, but basically, let's just say, let's find a, not a common ground, let's find out where the ground is. And if that's you, Bob, and Bill going over meeting with three of their people with the two attorneys, great. There's no commitment. There's no whatever. But at this point, with the court stopped dead, we're trying to water here. And I trust the three of you to go over and let's, let's see if there's an opportunity for some discussion that doesn't violate open meeting and go forward.
Settlement.
If you have the time.
I mean, direction.
Right. Yeah. And that would allow you to also ascertain if that was, I won't say rogue letter, because that's a wrong word, say. But if not, but if that is the, the feeling of the entire board, you know, and there's.
I'd like, I'd like to get any answer why you would back conduct the strategic plan.
Correct.
Just for the benefit of the kids.
Ask that regardless. I mean, good chance to ask that at that point. I think.
I mean, the kids would be the first priority.
Empowering our subcommittee, if you will, Don, the town administrator, liaison to initiate this is progress.
All right. Do we all agree on that?
I do. So then report back either an executive or open session, whatever feels appropriate at that time.
Okay. All right. Moving on here. Summers Road crosswalk options.
Uh, yes. Uh, maybe lights in here.
Either moving, you're either moving east or west on the cross.
This is a plan to.
Um, first of all, we have a hundred thousand dollars from, uh, the gaming commission for mitigation. I was speaking with Chief Barnsworth. He said that, uh, one of the needs uh, of the PD, uh, would be for, um, one of these digital radar speed monitoring devices. I ordered one of those, um, quite some time ago. Probably, uh, two to three months, but everything has slowed down. Um, I did call the company again in Kentucky last week. They said it has been shipped and I note that they charged for it. So it's on its way to. This is one of these devices that monitors speed, but can be programmed with a remote with another kind of message so that we can use it to notify people of town meetings and other important events. I think we, and then who does this arrive? I've been looking at opportunities for, um, other for the crosswalks. Let me see if I, uh, uh, here's what I have to do. Hold on.
I'm sorry, I missed it because I was turning the lights on. So the speed sign is the secondary part. Did you report where do we stand on the crosswalk?
Crosswalk. Yes.
Here we are.
I mean, that's the.
Here, here are the two sturdiest crosswalks. Uh, both are very attractive. Here's one and here's the other.
Uh, let's see. Did it come off my ears? Craig? No.
No. No, it's not on the screen. Uh, my cursor has frozen. Nice. I have another one, but something's happened with the cursor. Is that the blinking light thing? And well, then, in addition to the crosswalk, you would have on either side uh, lights, uh, signs, basically the yellow type signs that have blinkers around them. And then when you wanted to use the crosswalk, push the button and these are solar powered. Uh, and they would start blinking to warn motorists that someone's going to be in the crosswalk. So it's like the one in some metal?
Yeah.
Yes, just like that. So I think the cost of this crosswalk plus the lights and so forth in the range of twenty-five. So we spent twenty-three, roughly twenty-five more. We will have enough money to purchase another one of these mobile digital radar devices, which all the reports that I've seen show that it does have a very positive effect upon speed.
Oh, I agree. I agree. But again, to go back to the fact that the crosswalk was our priority, the leftover money from the crosswalk was used for the speed signs. And then we have to make sure we stay on top of the priority.
Is that painted or is that a crosswalk? That's, that's, that's a paper. Those are papers. So you gotta do roadwork, dig it up for papers. Yeah.
I gotta tell you.
Now I have another one too.
All those who are familiar with that area is, and Craig, you can speak to that because we were out there. Look, that traffic comes at a high speed. I don't care. It can be posted for twenty. They come zooming up at that gas station. And we really, the signage is critical. And that's where the focus has to be. And you can have all the blinking lights you want, but they want that good gas price and they're zooming to the thing.
Well, now these, this crosswalk is a different one. This one is, um, you see these in downtown Springfield. They just put up a number of them on Main Street. They are the most durable as well as the most expensive. So, uh,
So what is that material?
Uh, this is actually sticking it back on the floor. Stamped into the pavement. Uh, and, um, the, I think what they do is mill some of the pavement off. They put these, this material down.
I, I may be beating a dead horse here, but we're talking about what color you want the walls. And we haven't established how we're going to make that house in the right place and make it safe. I don't think people crossing care whether you have lines, checks, or this beautiful pattern. Whatever. As long as you've talked about the signage, the illuminated, the blinking lights, that's the priority.
That's it.
Because that traffic's coming in. They don't care how nice that crosswalk looks.
So, yeah, the thought I thought would use the digital radar device
Right.
a little farther out. People notice it, they slow down a little bit. Then you have, then you have the blinking signs,
Sure.
which I think reinforces the safety of the situation.
That might even say you have a little pre-sign ahead of time and like, oh my gosh, going too fast. Start slowing and oh, there's the cross.
So I get all this. This is good for visual deterrence and you can see this when you're right on top of it. The flashing lights is definitely a distance thing. But you know, when you go to busy places, they sometimes do those middlings in the road, a hundred yards, two hundred yards ahead of time, the, the warning strips that you have on the highway. It warns you that something's coming up and you notice it because you're driving over it. That should be something we should look into ahead and behind the crosswalk.
And I do say, I did notice that Mike Alarzeta talked about that one that's on the street in Long Meadow. I don't know how they get away with it because we've had that question before. Raymond Driver's always asked, how come we can't have a street phone? And there's reasons you can't. I don't know how Long Meadow gets away with it.
I don't either because usually the, the DOT takes a dim view of that because if you hit it at a relatively high rate of speed, you can lose control of your car and end up in somebody's front yard.
Right.
Or worse.
I mean, so my idea, and I'm glad you brought it up, but again, we looked at it because Raymond Driver's always asked for, Sessions always asked for. And you could actually cause more issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think in a, in a residential street, uh, they, they, okay, on an arterial street like Summers Road and Allen Street.
Oh, it's because the, that's, that's a TV thing. Yeah.
Good. So the crosswalk idea, I think is a good idea.
Okay.
I don't know if you need to go something crazy with some ergal pattern. But I think we need a warning system ahead of time. And I think that's where we would need like the wake up rumble strips, which are not big keys in the ground, which will lose control. But if you hit those strips, you know, they're spaced out. I don't know how far apart they're, they're supposed to be. But they, they're just a warning symbol. And they know, oh, I'm going too fast. Oh, I see the crosswalk sign now.
Yeah.
Okay. I see the flashing lights. You know, they'll be there twenty-four seven, whether somebody's pushing the button or not.
Yeah.
And it's going to get in people's mind that they should slow down.
Yeah. The reality of the rumble strip, your idea of the one, hate to say it, based, based on the south side, as people are approaching, coming up a little precursor, hey, your speed is such and such, point, point. Put it in their mind, oh my gosh, I better get down to thirty. You know, that might be a use for an extra ten thousand or something like that on the crosswalk.
Yeah. Um,
I don't see, I don't notice it as bad coming north to south because they're typically slowing for a lot of people turning on the main street or whatever. It's the definitely south.
Oh, those Connecticut people, everyone.
We're up there for a good gas prices now. Also, why are we talking about the extra local tax on out of state gas purchases?
You want to, well, I, I also have examples of the flashing lights too. But it's just a, it's a standard yellow sign with pedestrians going around.
Pedestrian on it, right?
Yeah. pedestrian control and, and, uh, solar activated.
Order it. Get that baby going.
Yeah. Does that need an extra thing? Like you have to have it calibrated once a year or anything like that? We have to let Mark know or?
Have to ask the chief what he knows about the.
The radar has to be calibrated here. Yeah. Our radar units has to be calibrated, the sign has to be calibrated. Okay. A little money aside from that hundred for to cover that. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Shared health, intermunicipal agreement?
Yes. Um, we met again today uh, to discuss a shared arrangement with the towns, um, in Eastern Hampton County. And, uh, I did send you, I think it was version four of the proposed I M A. Today we have another version of it and, um, actually Eric Weiss is on the, on the call right now. He can address the latest. The idea is we do an I M A um, using grant funds that have been secured by the town of Wilberham. We have an opportunity to put together a regional health system that would provide for a director who would oversee the services in the towns involved. That director will be the health director in the town of Long Meadow. They're going to be the host now. And then we will hire, uh, health agent, a, a health agent or perhaps more uh, to provide the, the kinds of services that we all need. And also, um, uh, public health nursing as well would be part of the package if we wanted to join that. Uh, our health nurse is doing excellent work. Unfortunately, she's limited to five hours and sometimes seven or eight hours a week because she has a full-time job. And we've offered her more hours if we could get them. She said, no, I can't do it. So if we need more hours or want more hours for a public health nurse, uh, we would have to be, uh, getting that service through this collaborative that, uh, we have been, uh, meeting to discuss. We have a grant that can fund this. Uh, it's intended for three years. And so it's a lot like the nine eleven grant in some ways. Encouraging regionalization with a hefty grant from the state. Eric Weiss is on this call. Eric?
I'm here.
Say a few things?
Um, sure. Um, just a quick note, um, the town that is actually getting the grant is Long Meadow. Um, so the, I know I was before the board, at least a month, probably longer ago. Who knows? Time flies quick these days. And the idea here is that we went after some, uh, Department of Public Health D P H funding. And the town of Long Meadow as the lead town was awarded two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars per year. Year one is starting July one. Um, we were awarded a little bit of money between now and the end of the fiscal year to the tune of thirty-five thousand to get this thing up and running. Um, we were already working on the effort through the district local technical assistance process funded through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And lastly, we had a really good working of an I M A, working version of an I M A that was adopted from the previous but unsuccessful attempt by Long Meadow and East Long Meadow to get, to get together that had already been vetted through town council, i.e. the town lawyer. So I have been working, um, very carefully on the I M A to get it right. Uh, basically it says, uh, and I know you've all gotten copies of it, but basically it says the towns will work together to create a shared health service. I even gave it a name. It is not a name that flows off the tongue very well, but it works, which is the Eastern Hampton Shared Public Health Services. So it has an acronym of E H S P H S. Bottom line, it says Eastern Hampton Shared Health. I mean, you can shorten it to what you want. But the idea is to create a shared service. It is not a district. It is not an agency. It is not a, uh, uh, commission. It is, um, in Massachusetts, you can create joint powers agreements and create joint powers entities of almost any variety you want, as long as you define certain things about them. The key to this one is it's what the, it's going to be up to the towns to decide which services are best to equitably share between the towns. Towns may not be into the shared service for all of the same things. Like towns might keep their public health administrator to do all the paperwork and not rely on the shared health service to do that. That's fine. Towns may stick with their current public health, public nursing person and not um, become part of the shared health service. Again, that's fine. What this is, is it, that's why it's an I M A, an intermunicipal agreement. It allows the towns to kind of decide which efforts they're going to share and which efforts they're not going to share. The key to this whole thing, um, I believe is the fact that East Long, I mean, that Long Meadow has stepped up and said they want to be the lead community. That means anybody who's hired through this service is actually going to be an employee of the town of Long Meadow and get all the benefits thereof. Um, and the other part is that, um, oh, I, somebody sent, wants me to ID. My name is Eric Weiss. I am the manager of regional municipal services for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Um, and so, um, where was I? I lost my train of, oh yeah. So the idea is that the towns would share the services they think would be best to be shared and that Long Meadow would be the lead. Um, what's really nice about this grant, um, is it will fund a shared public health nurse, a shared health director, health agent, I mean, a shared health agent. Um, well, those are both full-time positions and a shared services coordinator. And it will, it will fund that for year one. And right now the grant is supposed to go for three years. Um, and there is money that is in place now between now and July one. I get, like I said, to the tune of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. Really start working all the details out for Long Meadow and my time and all the things that are going on. Um, I think this is a really exciting opportunity for towns to work together. And for Long Meadow months and Hampton and Wilberham jointly to try to accomplish something, I think is also makes this very exciting. It makes this very, uh, unique in what it's trying to do. I think that the effort was funded by the state because they saw the potential here. Um, signing this I M A, I, if Hampton were to do it or when Hampton decides to do it, says that Hampton will work with the other three towns to create a shared arrangement. It does not obligate you financially to be part of that share arrangement until all budgets and things like that are approved, meaning in year one, we were saying that the budget for this organization, um, would be funded only by the grants so that we, there would be no, no ask of money from the towns. And then as the towns decide which services are shared and decide which services might be redundant or additive or really needed and included, um, a budget will be crafted, which will be a blend of both what is funded by the grants and what already exists in the communities. So that's the other advantage of this being an intermunicipal agreement as opposed to creating an absolute district with absolute control. The other thing about this is that this is agreement, is an agreement that's built to grow, meaning as the towns want to add more things to it over the future, they can do that. If towns choose to not do that and just do basically the, the minimum of shared services, they can do that. So I'm trying to. If towns choose to not do that and just do basically the, the minimum of shared services, they can do that. So I'm trying to write it as flexibly as I can. With the intent that all of the budget stuff would be. Outside of the agreement, so the towns can really work on that together as opposed to casting it inside the agreement. And making it more rigid and cumbersome for the towns to manage, trying to make it as flexible as possible. Um, it built into this agreement are different sections. Um, the first section is about the description of the shared health services department. I will not go into detail because I know you all can read. Um, the second section is all about the host community role. That would be Long Meadow. The third section is all about the budget and budget cost allocation process. And I'd be happy to answer questions tonight. The next section is about fee payments. Then there's a general description of the health director position. That is the person who is the health director for the town of Long Meadow. Would also direct this. There's a section on annual reporting. There's a small section on transition and dispute and then one on dispute with resolution. There is a section on withdrawal that any member town that decides to withdraw needs to notify the other towns nine months ahead. So they have time to adjust. And that doesn't mean they, uh, abdicate themselves of all costs, costs that they've incurred that they have to carry long term would be with them. Um, which is the only fair way to do this. Um, and the way we have it set up now is it needs to be signed by each of the select boards in each of the towns. Um, become official. Uh, like I said, I think the state was willing to fund this because they saw the opportunity. And the uniqueness of towns being willing to work together and try to figure out a way to work together. And right now we're at the stage where this agreement is really allowing for that communication of how the towns could try to work together, uh, could happen. I, that's, that's where my spiel will end.
Very good. Uh, let me, let me, let me ask you this question. So let me understand this and I'm not, I'm not too bright. The, uh, we have a public health nurse, so we could kind of keep her, right? Work quietly. But we need someone to check our septic tanks thing. So we wouldn't call Long Meadow or this person.
That would be.
Twenty hours.
You're on the right track. Um, what would be, what, there would be a kind of a regional committee that would steer this. And what would happen is they would say, okay, the town of Hampden is gonna need. Um, the shared health agent services for X number of hours per week or X number of hours per month or. So many, uh, visits per month, whatever it turns out to be. And that would be, it would be the obligation of the health director to make sure that those needs are being met.
We would replicate what Lori McCool currently provides.
Right.
She and Jane are part of the discussion of this group, by the way, so.
All right, and like.
And it just so.
These clinic and flu clinic, not at the same time, but you know.
Basically, we are trying to replicate what Lori did, but we're doing it on a regional basis where it's shared. In an open way between the towns and benefited and all those other things as a, as a, as a full position. Amongst other things.
All right, what was the length of this term? Was the agreement, was it a three years?
That's where it's interesting. Under state law, it can be up to twenty-five years. Um, is the, it's not a, you know, it's not like signing a contract where it's three years or five years. So that's what, that's what's been plugged in. Under joint powers agreements, you can go up to twenty-five years. You can't create them to last forever. Unlike a school district or something like that, which were built to be in place forever, which is a requirement that it get revisited at some point. We could shorten that. I'm just putting what the statute allowed.
So the grant covers three years, is that what we're saying?
The grant covers three years, yes, I'm sorry.
Bottom line for the town is, we're gonna lose our current health agent, Lori McCool.
August first.
This is a fully funded operation, uh, for several years. We have nothing to lose. If we don't wanna go forward after the end of the first year or second year, easily withdraw. But this could work out very well for us.
Is there any penalty to withdraw even through the grant period?
Um, we did not intermingle those two things. The grant period's there and the withdrawal period is part of the IMA. So. Um, I. There's not. One said answer to that, a town could withdraw during the grant period, sure. Even with the grant going on, withdraw. We would have to notify, um, DPH, but other than that, I don't, I don't see a reason why that couldn't happen.
Great. Anything else?
Um, couple of things. There's gonna be, the other towns are gonna be looking at the, uh, intermunicipal agreement to sign it soon. And I know I mentioned it the last time I was before the board, that there's going to be a letter of support that is requested of the town. To support the grant effort. Um, we're getting a, um. Letter from DPH, a model letter that DPH is putting together to you, to do that. I could have had one written by tonight, but they said they want us to use air. Better, I think they're looking for specific language in it. I'm not sure. When we have that letter available, when we get it from DPH, I will make sure that Bob gets it right away.
All right. Now, did you send out the updated version of that IMA?
Yes, it should say draft number six at the top and have today's date.
Cause we looked at number five draft this afternoon.
Yeah. There weren't a lot of changes.
There weren't, no. I, I will send out number six to the selectmen to continue to review.
We're pretty close to a final version on number six, so.
All right, thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Road construction program?
Yeah, Mark was, uh.
Got a list here. Is here?
Yeah.
He's here.
Hello.
Oh, there he is. Hi, Mark.
Hi, everybody.
So why is Oak Knoll being completely rebuilt with sidewalks and everything?
Well, you know, the, the chairman of the board lives on Oak Knoll.
Forget the laws.
Yeah, right.
Put it in that pile at the end of my driveway. All right.
We can certainly take a look at that. So, uh, just before, before I get into this, I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh. Kind of doubling back on the Memorial Day events, uh, we will be taking, uh, a considerable amount of time this week. To, uh, prepare Main Street, uh, specifically the town hall and the town common. For those services, uh, we will be pretty much just doing everything we, we would normally do. Uh, e- even though we're not having a parade, we're gonna put the flags up. Uh, we're, we're gonna leave those up through the fourth of July, uh, this year. I think we did that last year, but. Like I said, I just want, that we'll be planting the flowers at the town common. So on and so forth, grooming the, uh, the fields, weed whipping, just making everything, uh, nice and neat for, for the services. So I just wanted to. Let you know about that. Um, and then, uh. It's that time of year again, I, I, you know, I usually, uh, send out a, a draft, uh, draft report of, of streets I'm, I'm looking at to. Improve. So this year I've got a couple of main roads and a couple of side streets. That are. On the list. So I just wanted to have the selectmen review and, uh. Provide any feedback on those.
You talked about this before, I mean, your projected numbers. What do you think's gonna happen with, obviously, with the infrastructure money coming out? Everybody's gonna have work. Do you think you're gonna be caught short because prices are gonna go up? I know some of this is on bid already. But are you gonna be caught where you're going out? Lane doesn't wanna quote anymore because their book is full. Palmer doesn't wanna quote, their book is full. Is that a danger?
John, uh, the only thing I, uh. Well, for our, uh, milling services, reclaim services and paving services, those are under agreement. Uh, we're in the last year of that agreement, so I feel pretty confident about those numbers. The only place I, I may run into an issue with is, uh.
Mark?
I'm sorry?
Agreement covers the pricing. It doesn't guarantee they have availability. I mean, they'll hold that price, but they could have five jobs and yours isn't one of them.
Uh, you're right about that. And so what I can do too is, you know, upon. Approval of this, you know, list, I can get on the phone first thing tomorrow morning and just, you know, um. Just make, you know, make sure we're good. I, I, these are local companies and I know they're, they're filling up, but they'll. I've got relationships with both of them.
One question, I looked at the except, the other potential list. Bob, would we be able to use the ARP money for these other paving projects?
Uh, don't know yet. Um, I don't think so. I don't know for sure.
You don't think so?
I think if we have, um, an opportunity to use federal money, it's going to be in the infrastructure legislation that's currently. In the Congress.
Okay.
And, you know, Biden wanted, what, two point four trillion? Republicans wanted six hundred million or billion and Biden just came down and I guess. The Republicans went up to eight hundred billion, so I think they're, they're getting there. And over the next couple of. Months, I think we'll, we'll get some infrastructure money and I think that's where we have the opportunity.
You know what I'm saying? The current money that we're planning on the one point five.
The ARPA?
Yeah.
No.
That's only for water slash.
That kind of infrastructure, water sewer and, uh, and, uh. Uh, broadband.
All right, what do you think?
Hey, easy, Ed.
Yeah.
We got the money. He is short a hundred and forty-four dollars and I hope he, you know. Based on, Mark, you can find that one forty-four somewhere?
I'll, I'll find somewhere to, to get that from. Um, I did, I did want to, I, I did wanna note, uh. You know, I did receive a, a, a letter from Mass DOT Bridge Division, so they were looking at. Their last two inspection reports, uh, noted some repairs that needed to be done on Laughing Brook Bridge. And then also on the, on the South Road Bridge. I had sent a, a note out to Bob and I believe John too, uh. We could possibly look into, while Laughing Brook Bridge might be con- uh, considered in the small bridge. Program through the MVP project, but the South Road Bridge, the repairs on that, we may. Be able to use some of that, uh, infrastructure money with that.
All right. Start digging or plowing or.
No, basically motion.
Milling, milling.
I make a motion to, uh, construction projects as recommended by the head.
Second, all in favor? Go forth and bill, Mark.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Uh, correspondence, no. Selectment report?
This is, thing is this week, uh, looking forward to the planning board meeting. COA moving forward, housing authority moving forward.
Painting Academy Hall moving forward.
Well, I think you were looking at, what town would you say? He was thinking July, August. Um, what wouldn't hurt? I'd like, uh. Bob to draft some type of work with him, how we're gonna notify the authorities. I think a proper notification then would be right. The two house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Administrator report?
Okay, we've been through, uh, a number of these items. Uh, the Amoresco, uh, discussion on the seventeenth, we've talked about already. We met with the architects in the highway garage, we've already discussed. Capital Planning Committee met on the eighteenth. Again, I think they're making progress. Um, the grant was submitted, uh, for the culvert study you know about. The health group met today. I did request a meeting with the advisory committee to discuss the budget process as you requested.
Can I make a recommendation? Typically, they meet after the close of the fiscal year. You know, to do any last, moving last month, that'd be the right time, I think. Gone, you know, like. Uh, right up to July. Rather than dragging them.
Okay. Uh, we are collecting a couple of, um. Uh, uh, budget items that need to be, uh. Uh, brought into that sixty day process. So not much, but just a couple of different items where we're short and need transferred. Um, so the Clergov, uh, I did cancel back in April. It's gonna be removed from the website on June thirtieth. Oak Knoll, no news, although Susan West does call every week faithfully to tell us. Basically, she's been saying the same, that they're looking for, uh, alternate housing and haven't found any at this point. Academy Hall painting, showing the painting, the scheduled work last week of July. Uh, firefighter, EMT Brandon Kerr, I talked with him today. Uh, he received his last check. He also got his overtime check. He did not get the, 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 uh. Payoff for his time off or his vacation and so forth. And, um, he was unhappy. I did talk to the chief about it. The chief said that their staff person who does. The payroll, uh, was on vacation for a week and so there's been a delay. He will get his check this week. So, uh, they did, uh. They did, uh, put it on the warrant, uh, on Thursday. Uh, the electric work, I did send you this information from the chief. The exhaust system is finished and operational. And the electrical system work is almost complete at this point, so. That's, that's progress. Lastly, lastly, the park and rec department would like permission. To use the gas account at the highway department. What they currently do is they go to the filling station, fill up and then get reimbursed.
So. I mean, I hate to say it, that's worked for twenty years and.
What was the issue?
Yeah, they hired someone to replace.
Did they buy new retail?
They're buying retail.
Five dollars really given up. You know, the guy, he, they're gonna be using it weekends. I'm just saying, is it more trouble than.
What do they put gas in, lawnmower?
There's not a lot of gas. Okay.
I'll say, you know, Catwood Mark runs the gas point system and.
Yes.
Seems.
Comes out of the budget either way.
Two five gallon cans a couple of times a month, doesn't seem like it's. How much tax are we talking here?
Well, I guess it depends on what the rate is. Like what are we buying at discounted rate for highway department?
I know, I'm saying, but seriously, how much are they using and how much? Now, when we get to the point where it's a town vehicle, if we do that in the future, that's a different thing.
That's different.
If it's five gallon cans and a mower.
Yeah, it's not gonna make.
All right, anything else to come?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
No, no, I'm gonna let Greg do that, your first one.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
I.